I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. This time, we'll have our invocation by Ms. Lisa Cap.
Ms. Cap?
So we'll just open up in prayer, and Lord, we just come to you. We thank you, Heavenly Father, for this meeting. We thank you that you give wisdom and guidance tonight. Father, we ask you to just lead everyone. We ask you for peace, first of all, in the city and in the school system. God is your guiding and leading tonight and giving wisdom in all things, God. We just thank you that they're able to come to an agreement tonight on the mask mandate and all the things that they are discussing tonight. Father God, we ask you to be with each and every person in here. And, Lord, we ask you to be with our school system. We pray over our schools for safety and protection and over every person here tonight, God. We ask you to just be with the teachers every day as they're at the schools and with the principal. Father God, all of the leaders, Father God, that make this system work for the schools. Father, we just thank you, Lord, and we ask you to just give peace here tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Ma'am. Thank you.
Mr. President, can we stop a minute so we can get on the screen?
You're welcome.
Hi, Dave. Gravy.
Okay, in front of us is item C. And before I ask for an adoption of an agenda, I would like to request, at the pleasure of the board, Dr. Edney said that we could call him and he would give some information to us. And request that we also move the persons that wanted to speak to the board about the mask mandate. So if you all would allow me, once Dr. Edney is finished, and if we have any questions for Dr. Edney, we can ask him. And then we'll have the persons come up that have gone through the proper channels. And then we'll also take up AO, which is the mask mandate, and vote at that time. So if, I would like to make that in a motion, if that's okay with us moving that around in the agenda.
I'll make a motion that we move anything mask mandate related to item C on the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in properly. Second, are there any other questions? Are you ready to vote? All in favor, say aye. Pose like sign. Motion is approved. So at this time, do we have any other for the agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion when you approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in properly. Second, are you ready to vote? All in favor, say aye. Pose like sign. Motion is approved. Dr. McGee?
We have due board minutes now.
Uh-uh, they moved it to C. It should be called in.
I know he was in, he was in the meeting all day long, so I'm not sure where he'll be right now. I spoke to him at eight o'clock this morning.
So you want to, I guess what we'll do then to maybe expedite it is to, we'll just wait before we ask the persons to come up, because we'd like to hear what Dr. Edney has, unless you all want to leave it as is right now. And then when Dr. Edney calls, we can stop where we are. As you say, he's been in meetings. Let him speak, and then we'll let the persons that are here talk about the mask mandate. Would you rather for them to go on and talk?
If I may suggest, there may be questions that come out of the public's comments that Dr. Edney might want to address. So we may let them go first and have Dr. Edney speak last so he can address any comments that may come up in those comments. Just a suggestion.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's perfect. As long as one of us asks, I have no problem with it. So at this time, would, and somebody would help me, Shelby?
Ms. Prima.
Yes, ma'am. Please come on up. And I apologize, I didn't want to mispronounce your name.
I have someone waiting out, someone give you, okay?
Okay. And I won't cheat you out of your time. I'll wait till you finish. Thank you. Ma'am, thank you. You have five minutes, okay?
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, most definitely.
Good evening, my name is Shelby Prima. I have two kids in the Beechwood School District. I have been a critical care nurse for 10 years. I have worked the entirety of the pandemic in the critical care unit as well as the emergency department, taking care of COVID patients. Additionally, I recently finished my nurse practitioner degree, so I am also a nurse practitioner. I just want to go over some numbers with y'all so we can look at the actual data. No opinions, just facts, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
So this first picture that y'all are looking at is the current trend of COVID in Mississippi from April of 2020 to November of 2016. As you can see, we've had approximately three waves. This most recent wave was primarily the Delta variant, which was highly contagious. But because it was so contagious, it burned itself out very quickly, which is why it's such a tall, narrow peak. In Mississippi, there have been 509,942 cases of COVID-19 from the beginning until the 16th. Of those cases, 89,554 have been in kids under 17 years of age. This means that 17.6% of COVID cases are in children under 17. The pandemic has been going on for approximately 18 months, and to date, only 17% of Mississippi has tested positive for COVID-19. Let me put that into perspective for you, if you don't mind. 23.5% of Mississippi adults have high blood pressure. 16.7% of Mississippi has high cholesterol. 37.3% of our adults are obese. And 22.3% of our children are obese. Approximately 20% of Mississippi smokes. And 19% of our pregnant mamas don't get prenatal care. And we have a higher SIDS rate than any other state, okay? These next two images on the next page, or the next two pages, show us over, we've had a significant drop in cases. Sorry, I'm not a public speaker. If you know me in person, I'm a talker, but I'm not a public talker. So the next two images show a significant drop in cases. From October 5th to November 1st, we've had a 37% decrease. On the next page, you'll see from, what was this one? The 12th to November 8th, we'd had a 31% drop in cases. Overall, in the last month, we've had a 44% decrease in COVID-19 cases. All right, so we're going to talk about the uncomfortable subject, death, okay? Unfortunately, I've spent the last 18 months with people while they died alone because you couldn't visit in the hospital. So unfortunately, there have been nine pediatric deaths, which is a total case mortality of 0.01% among infected children under 17. If you compare pediatric deaths to total cases, pediatric deaths account for 0.0018% of deaths in all cases. If you look at pediatric deaths among all deaths, you'll find that pediatric deaths account for 0.09% of the case deaths. In the last, oh, I'm sorry. According to the Mississippi State Department of Health, 55 kids died in car accidents in 2019. Six died in fires. 12 died in drownings. Three asphyxiated. 45 were assaulted, which led to their deaths. And 12 died of SIDS. So we don't take away cars. We don't live without electricity. We never, we would not not take our kids swimming because what if they drowned, right? We understand that in life, there is risk, and we have to quantify that risk. How risky is this to me? For children, COVID is not risky. Even if we look at the next two pages, which are the deaths broke down by age, in the 18 to 24%, I mean, I'm sorry, 18 to 24-year age group, deaths were 0.05% of the cases. In the 25 to 39 age group, 0.27% of the deaths resulted in deaths, I'm sorry. 40 to 49 years old, their cases had a death mortality rate of 0.78%. 50 to 64 was 2.35% of those patients died. 65 to 69, 5.49% of infected people died. 70 to 79 years old, 9.58% of those people died. Eight to, I'm sorry, 80 to 89, 19.23% of infected in that age group died. And 90 and above, they had a mortality rate of 32.69%. The average age of a teacher in Mississippi is 41, okay?
Your time is up.
That's my time, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I can't pronounce this one. Dr. James Archer?
Sir, Mr. President, pardon. That was misunderstanding with Reverend Archer. He's on the phone, if he's allowed to.
Yes, sir, that's fine.
All right, I want to give him a call.
Police telling me he has five minutes.
Yes, sir. Reverend Archer, can you hear us?
I hear.
All right, Reverend Archer, you have five minutes. So you, the timer will start when you start speaking.
Okay, thank you. Good evening to all, and let me just apologize for not being there in person because I was just on my behalf of miscommunication or misunderstanding the communication. But anyway, I am Pastor Archer, a local pastor, and I'm standing in for our congregations and our community just to make a plea, if you will, as it relates to keeping the mask mandate in place. I think everybody pretty much know the statistics as it relates to the effects. The numbers have went down, but we are in prayer, hoping that you all will consider keeping it in place, at least until after the holidays. You know, we have a lot of activities that are taking place. Our big ball games that many Mississippians will be attending. Ole Miss, Mississippi State, Jackson State, Alcorn. We got the holidays where there's going to be a lot of people coming from all four corners of the world, being there in fellowship with one another. And so again, I know everybody pretty much have their opinions, but basically what we, as the Vicksburg Ministry of Alliance has done, we have just agreed to follow the medical professors and follow their advice as it relates to keeping the mask mandate in place. We already know the risks as it relates to hospitalization and death and the schools having to close and how many of the young people didn't stop going when it was at its worst and spread it to their loved ones. We already know, again, the economic issues that have resulted as relates to COVID. But the thing of it is, you know, we still have a lot of people who haven't returned to work. They're still working from home. Thank God, finally restaurants and businesses are back up. But we still risk them having to close or perhaps go back to just doing pickups. And I love sports and I'm able to attend some ball games. But again, that's something else that we put in jeopardy. Perhaps if we don't keep the mask mandate in place, having to cancel sporting events and again, having to just go back and doing everything virtual as it relates to school and even with holidays with family and friends and postponing large gatherings. And so again, that we can continue to experience some normalcy and continue to combat this COVID collectively. We're just asking, again, as ministers in the city of Vicksburg and in the county as well, that you all will consider keeping the mandate in place. I understand the political side, but there comes a time when, you know, it's not a matter of what's right or what's wrong. It's a matter of what's best. And those of us who are in leadership positions, we have to take a stand to do what's best for the common good of all people and not just select few. And so again, thank you all for giving me a voice to stand in for, again, our congregations and our communities. Just want to be that voice for a lot of our educators who feel that they can't really say what they want to say because of some consequences that they may have associated from voicing their opinions about it. And so that's what we're here for, just to be a voice for those in the community, our educators and our students and entire faculty and staff. So again, thank you all for listening and allowing me an opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any luck on Dr. Edney?
No, sir.
No luck so far? Okay. So we will continue on with the, I would love to get this over with, but we really still wanted to ask that we talk with Dr. Edney. So we had a letter, for those of you who do not, that you were not here last month, we had a letter from Dr. Edney last month, which was talking about the masks and keeping the mask on at that time. I don't know what 30 days have since done for him on what he will or won't do, okay? So that's why we're waiting on to talk to Dr. Edney to see how he feels about. We think we're getting him here? Okay. I'm getting a point here. So that sounds good. Well, okay. So at this time, we'll have Dr. Edney to speak. And Doc, would you tell the doc he has five minutes, please?
Dr. Edney, can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Doc, you have five minutes, sir. If you would just share your thoughts on the mask mandate.
I apologize, I'm traveling tonight. But I did do what Dr. Dobbs about is specifically yesterday at length. And, you know, the, what I'm sharing with the school board is not my individual opinion. This is the recommendation of the CDC and the Mississippi State Department of Health and specifically Dr. Dobbs' recommendation is that K through 12 still need to have the mask requirements, especially as we're moving into the winter phase and we are expecting an increase in outbreaks as we move through Thanksgiving and Christmas. Probably the week after Thanksgiving, we'll start to, you know, see more cases and more outbreaks at that point. And, you know, we've been expecting this for some time, and we're already seeing indicators that this is, you know, beginning to happen. And we'll just have to watch how numbers do and how caseloads do through the holidays. I know hospitals and clinics are preparing for the next wave. We don't think it'll be as bad as what we just went through or as bad as it was last November, December, January, but it's going to get worse at least one more time before it gets better. And Dr. Dobbs specifically, just wanted everybody to know how much, you know, he and all of us have appreciated the good work that y'all have done. Y'all, as a school board, really have been an example to other school boards in the state of how to take care of your faculty, staff, and students safely. You've done a remarkable job, good outcomes. You're doing great with testing and facilitating vaccinations. But now is not the right time to let our guard down. This is not over. It's going to get a little bit, at least a little bit worse before it gets better. How much so, we just don't know. But we've got to watch how the next two to three weeks go. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Board, do you all have any questions for Dr. Edney?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead, sir.
So, Dr. Edney, this is Brian Pratt. How are you, sir?
Hey.
When we started the year, we actually started without the mandate because that was the recommendation from the CDC. And about two weeks into the year, as the Delta variant kind of kicked in, we initiated the mask mandate. So I think what a lot of people's concern are is that at what point in time or what positivity rate is acceptable to eliminate the mask mandate? Because from my calculations, we've had a decrease from when we started school. From July 31st, Warren County, to now, we've had about an 87% decrease in the number, in the positivity rate. And so is the positivity rate a good measure? Or what level of positivity rate is acceptable to where we could relax a mandate? Or does anyone have that number? Because I think that's what a lot of people want to know. They want to see the light at the end of the tunnel. And I think they see the drastic decrease. And I know you're, everyone's concerned about the holidays and the winter creating an increase. But how, is there, is there a positivity rate that's acceptable?
Yes, and that, and that's really up to the epidemiology. Yes, and that's really up to the epidemiological scientist at the CDC and the Health Department to determine when we reach that point. You know, I'm not an epidemiologist. I'm the chief medical officer for the Health Department and I'm a clinician. And when I need answers to these questions, I turn to the experts, which are the CDC and Dr. Dobbs and Dr. Byers, you know, at the State Health Department. We're already seeing counties where the numbers are starting to escalate. Europe is already escalating significantly and they are far more vaccinated than we are. Testing is going up. I had to pull four kids out of school today because of severe exposures at home. You know, you can't just look at day-to-day numbers. You have to look at all the trends and look at all the indicators around the state. And that's the purpose of the CDC and the Health Department, is to do that for you. You know, our recommendation is to listen to the experts and follow their guidance. And the guidance is to maintain the mask until we get through what likely will be a significantly worse episode than where we are now.
Doc, Jim Sturgis. One quick question. You are the chief medical officer, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any other questions for Doc? He's had a long day today. Do you have one, sir? Do you have one, sir?
Good.
Okay. Tell him thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Edney.
Okay. You've heard the pleasure of those for, those against, and the medical expert.
Could I say something, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
So I just kind of want to, we kind of chewed this up last week and we made a recommendation to draw a line on the sand and end masks after the holidays, and it did not have support. I personally believe masks work. I personally believe the vaccine works, and I personally believe that everyone should get vaccinated. But I'm at a point now that we are below the positivity rate from when we started in August, where we were okay with not having a mask, but now we're not. So I personally support ending the mask mandate with certain caveats today. Those caveats would be if there's an outbreak in a school, that that school would mask up. If there's an outbreak in a classroom, that classroom would mask up for 14 days. That's me personally. I think that we have to give the public light at the end of the tunnel. We need to reward the people for getting vaccinated, and I would encourage every parent to get your child vaccinated. I know that is also a personal choice, but the vaccine works. The mask has worked for us, we've shown that. I think our last, correct me if I'm wrong, Doc, but our last positivity rate, or excuse me, our last number of students that tested positive for last week was, was it four?
Yes, sir.
We have seven students or teachers who are currently quarantined. Is that correct?
Yes, for last week, we go to eight through 12. We have two staff, five students.
Okay, that's, so that's, okay.
And then the week prior, the week prior to that, the first and the fifth, we only have one staff and one student.
Okay. If you look at the positivity rate when, excuse me, I don't have the positivity rate. Currently, the positivity rate is 7.9%, if I'm not correct. And we had 13 cases in Warren County this week. Last week, we had six, 14, October 23rd, 14 the week before that, 23 on October 16th, 39 on October 9th, 52 on October 2nd. And on 7/31, if my numbers are correct, there were 104 cases. And we were okay with letting kids come to school on August 1st without a mask with 104. So that's why I asked Dr. Edney, because I think you have to, and I didn't get, I understood what he said, but he didn't give us a number. And I don't think they're going to give us a number. I think, I don't, I don't know, I think we, I'm concerned that how we get to a number, do we say, because at some point in time, I have no problem, even though I support eliminating the masks today, I have no problem with reinstituting the mandate if the numbers get above whatever that positivity rate. And if the positivity rate is not the number we should be using, I'm asking the medical professionals to tell us that. Because none of us here are medical professionals. We are all doing our best to protect children the best we can. And I know a lot of parents feel on both sides of that. If all of us got, I think Jim's got his stack there, we have a stack of emails, those that are for keeping the mandate and those that are against wearing the mask. And we're trying to find balance, the balance in the middle that safeguards our children as well as provide them a way to have an education where they don't feel restricted. The restriction that we take or that we put in place are there to safeguard them, but at what point do we stop having the mask? So that's what I asked last board meeting. That's why I wanted to draw a line on the sand, because I think people need to see the light at the end of the tunnel, that we're not just kicking this can and we, you know, set some priority as to what that level is. And we've gone down since, you know, last, I think we were here last, it was 11%. I think it was right at a little over 11% and everyone felt like if it kept going down, well, it has. It's now, looks like it's 7.9. So that's personally how I feel. You know, I think that, I want to reiterate, I think the masks work, that our numbers show that, once we instituted the mask mandate in August, our numbers of children, we quarantined and those that tested positive, within the two weeks, it started drastically impacting and was the thing to do at that time. But I personally believe at this point in time that it is time to relax the mandate with certain caveats, that if there's a, if there is an outbreak at a classroom, that that classroom would mask up for 14 days, or if there's an outbreak at a school, then that's already been defined and we're already tracking that already, that it would very easily, we could very easily reinstitute that mandate at school for 14 days or in that classroom to take care of whatever's going on at that time.
Mr. Pratt, I understand what you're saying, and may I just add on to my comments, if you would allow me? You said in the beginning that we had 104 cases, give or take, and at that time, we had it optional to have a mask. But as the school progressed, the count went up. So we chose mask mandate. And today, we only had, as of last week, with the mask mandate, we only had one. During this time, as Dr. Edney had just mentioned, that Dr. Dobbs and he and other medical experts are of the opinion, as I am. We have Thanksgiving coming up, and if you will look at how many days that your kids will be in school between now and Thanksgiving and between, once they get back from Thanksgiving to Christmas, you will see it doesn't even total up to 30 days. So if you will look at the picture, as in, do you want to create, plus in Thanksgiving, you have your families coming in from all over, and Christmas, you have your families coming in from all over. Some may be vaccinated, some may not be vaccinated. And some of you will say, well, we got 80,000 in a football game. You are correct. And 80,000 are outside. So in my opinion, I think we need to wait until after these two holidays to release the masks because of the families that are coming in to these Thanksgiving and Christmas. And then an option would be, and I would be the first one to raise my hand to say, it's an option. And Brian speaks of the positivity rate. I can't answer that question, but we still, in my opinion, we still could do it. Then if the rate goes up, as in, that's over in the UK and over there where it's rising again, but if our rate goes up, then we can, we'll have to go back to a mask mandate. But I'm all for releasing it after the two holidays that we have coming up. So that's my 10 cents word.
Mr. President, may I make my statement on that?
Yes, sir.
We are the second largest employee in Vicksburg, Mississippi, the Vicksburg Warren School District. We have a lot of, we have 7,000, over 7,000 kids in our care. We also understand that when you got, we have a lot of good teachers, good bus drivers, good cafeteria workers that have underlying condition. And to put them in a situation, as Mr. Sturgis has said and as Mr. Pratt was saying, the timeline that we're trying to see is not that bad. And you just have to look at these teachers that, we didn't ask them to go into a war zone, we asked them to teach our kids. We just need to sit back a little bit, take a deep breath, and hold on for a minute. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Do we have any other?
I just want to, I want to kind of play off of what Brian was saying. I spoke to Dr. Edney myself personally this morning. The reason he can't give you a number, a definitive number, is that we're in a different demographic than other parts of the state. So Dr. Dobbs and the guys over there are dealing with the entire state as a whole, so they can't tell us what the infection, what infection rate is acceptable for our demographic. So that's why you're not getting a number out of anybody, because nobody knows. Nobody really knows what that number is. So what we're hearing, or what I'm hearing from the public is, we have kind of two different people that want the mask gone. We want the ones that don't want their child's ears hurting and they don't want their makeup messed up and they don't want their, whatever it is that comes, that taking this thing off relieves that child of. Then we have the other part that are saying, even if my child has a mask off and they catch it, it's not fatal to them. So you have ones that are willing to risk the child catching it, and then you got others that don't, I don't really know what's going on there. And then we've got the others that are saying, leave it on there, it's worked, and we are, we're all in that same camp. We, you know, we just don't know. As Mr. Pratt said, I'm for a date or a time or a number. If we say tonight, January 1st, whatever that date is, give these people some hope. Let's give them an idea of when this is going to happen and come up with a resolution. The chances of us coming in, calling an emergency meeting the morning of that day and saying, we got to keep it going, are huge. That chance is there. We'll have to jump in and redo it. But I just don't feel like we need to just linger this on at all. I mean, we need to nail it down, set a date, and live with it. And the public's going to have to appreciate that, because that's all we've got, is dated.
The other reason for warning that number is that if this were to get worse in January or February, that people would already have the expectation that when you reach this level, we're going to put the mask mandate back in. But, you know, I think some people think that we arbitrarily did this. Now, we initially instituted the mask mandate because we were concerned about the variant and how it was exploding in the community, and it was. But, you know, we had 13, we had 13 people test positive this week.
If y'all don't mind, I'd just like to make one of the clarifying points. The reason that the change in mask mandate occurred was because the CDC and the Mississippi Health Department changed their opinion on it. At the very beginning of school, they did allow for those that were vaccinated not to wear masks. So, you know, we put forth a recommendation as a board to allow parents and not be in the mask police constantly because of the difficulty between establishing who was and who wasn't vaccinated. But once the variant hit, the CDC and the Mississippi Department of Health changed their recommendation for K-12 schools. And they said everyone should wear a mask, whether they're vaccinated or not. And that was really, the change was due to their opinion.
So I'm concerned, this really goes against just what the decision we're trying to make here, but going forward in the future, whatever decision is made here, I'm still very concerned because they won't give us a number, that we're going to be in the same position we are today or we were in August, trying to make a decision based on how they feel about it that day, not a, we all talking about, you know, looking at science and numbers, then give me the number. Give me a number that is acceptable, that we can live with, so that people have that expectation. If we hit that number again, if it's 11%, if it's 8%, if it's whatever it is, then we're going to put a mask back on until it goes below that number and then we'll relax the mandate again. But I'm afraid, it looks to the public that we're doing this arbitrarily, and I wish the medical profession would sign up and give us a little more clarity, because it's putting us in a position that we're not medical professionals. My internet medical degree still has not arrived in my house. I'm waiting for it to show up, you know? So.
Do we have any more discussion? What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to continue the mask mandate until January 14th, 2022, and teachers that are immunocomprised have the option to require the mask in their class after January 14th, if so be.
Can I ask a question of your motion, Coach?
Go ahead.
Yes, sir. In the previous meeting, I thought Briggs had said that that was, we didn't have the ability to do that because of HIPAA reasons, the last part of your motion.
The immunocompromised?
Yeah. Didn't he? I thought he did.
I don't know.
We need to check, because that is very much need to be in there, because we have teachers that have that. And there's no sense in sending them in there, and we know this, you know? So if it is, we can look at that with our attorney, Mr. Teller, we'll try to do it with Briggs. But that, the reason from January, when we first come back, because this is when it's going to incubate if it's out there. In those 10 days, we need to see where we are instead of have a mass breakout in schools all over the place and not necessarily needed. And it's not that much time difference. As Jim, as the president already said, we are out of school less than, you are out of school less than 20 days from now. And so those 10 days to come back, it doesn't, it doesn't work or dare to go into something and not know the outcome when you can just sit back and see it, and it won't hurt anything.
So I'm not questioning your date. If you were in the last meeting, I recommended this and no one supported it. I also recommended it immediately, but I didn't think the board, there was the support of the board to do that. But I'm just questioning the requirement for the immunocompromised requirement. I didn't think it was legally, we had some comment that was made by Briggs at the time about it. I don't know.
Well, if I'm understanding the motion, he is stating that the teacher, if the teacher has a compromised immunity, you're talking about that individual teacher. They're not trying to get someone else to disclose medical information.
No, the teacher's trying, if a teacher, I think what Coach, don't worry, the word in your mouth is asking is that if a teacher has, now, are you going to allow, what if they have someone in their home? I mean, where does it stop?
If it stops, that's what we said, if the teacher come, we're not making it mandatory that the teacher does that. If she, if she has this deficiency, or he has this, then he come and he just requests that. And as far as that goes, request that he, that they can wear a mask.
I don't understand why that's difficult, because teachers mandate all kinds of things within their classroom. They tell you to write with a blue pen, they tell you to write with a red pen, they tell you to use a green notebook, they tell you to use a blue notebook. So if the teacher wants to tell you that you have to wear a mask in their classroom, I don't see where that's difficult.
So I think that's correct.
Right?
I don't think you got HIPAA problem with that motion, but we do need a second for further discussion.
I'll make a second. I second the motion.
Okay. The board have a proper second. Are there any other discussion?
So, this is going to sound real redneck, but aren't we throwing these teachers under the bus by giving them the opportunity to do that? Now the teacher's going to be dealing with the parents instead of us. And how do we, how do we as a board determine which teacher gets permission to require the mask?
Are you going to check their medical records?
I don't know. That's what I'm saying. So we need to be, I think we're walking a fine line on, because you may have a teacher that says, I want them all to wear a mask every day and not really have an underlying condition, or even more importantly, they may have an 85-year-old mother at home that's got diabetes and heart disease that they're going to carry this home to and kill her. So what, I'm just saying, what, how are we going to decide which teacher gets permission to do this? Is that going to be something as part of this, can we amend this motion to say that that's an application process or whatever the case may be? I don't know how we're going to govern that.
Right. And I understand... And and I understand what you all are saying. It would have to be the teacher, his or herself, as Coach has just mentioned, not the mom. My mom is 90 years old. If I was a teacher, I couldn't, because she is, I couldn't come in the classroom and say, you must wear a mask. So it would have to be me with, and I'm gonna throw something out, it doesn't, I'm just throwing something out. If I had cancer, and I could not have kids that have to have their mask on, so it would, you would know I have cancer, but I see you, you all asking for burdens of proof for the teacher, is what you're.
I just, I just, I don't want, I don't want a, some teacher that is, that does not have an underlying condition or whatever, just mandating this willy-nilly. I think there needs to be some kind of application process to where they could say, here's a form I'll fill out, here's what's wrong with me, and here's where it's signed by my doctor, and then mask away. I'm good.
Yes, sir.
Solution, uh, our superintendents and the, and the principals, the teacher can be confident with their principal or the superintendent, and then they can check that from there.
Okay.
Every day, one a day, they can do that.
So you want to amend your motion to have a superintendent to make sure that he or she has that, they are compromised? Is it, are we able to do that, Mr. Attorney?
Well, might be sneaking into the HIPAA issues now, but why don't you, that, let's go forward with your motion, and we can review that. That's, you're talking about in January. That gives us time to make sure that doesn't cross the line.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second. Are you ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can we show our hands, please?
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion is approved. This time, we'll go back to the reading of the minutes. We're on D. Mr. Secretary?
Board members, you have before you, uh, the minutes from our regularly scheduled meeting on October the 28th. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes for October the 28th? Seeing as none, I make a motion, we accept the minutes for October 28th board meeting as presented.
Promoted and properly seconded, if we approve the minutes. Are you ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion is approved. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, sir. Had a busy month. Most notably, we just attended the Mississippi School Board Association Conference, where the board received an award for being a board of merit that was presented to us. And then in addition to that, we have Coach Stevens, uh, who received the John L. Hartman Memorial Award. And I think this is the sixth one out of seven years. Uh, that's pretty incredible. Uh, he is very committed to making sure that he represents our board and knows as much or more than every single board member in the state of Mississippi for the operations of school board systems. So we're very proud of them, uh, and we're, we're great, greatly privileged to be able to be there and accept that award alongside them. Uh, we did a little Teacher Academy speech. I don't get to get in the classroom and teach much, um, and and I was very thankful to be invited to do that in Ms. Faganbaum in Kelsey's class. Um, we had a workshop with one of our partners, which is West Virginia University of Parkersburg. They are interested in increasing their dual credit and early college attainment. Um, and they said, hey, y'all know what you're doing, can you come talk with us? So we did. Uh, it was a great, great opportunity to share with them. Uh, we finished up our last partnership with Florida, University of Florida, uh, RAIL, and we had a CCR best practices coaching session with them. Uh, and we're looking at increasing our youth apprenticeships and internships, even though we have that, both of those present in the district. That's one of the next drives of increasing those opportunities. Uh, the data is incredibly skewed towards the success rate of businesses and retention and recidivism, uh, and students that complete college, stay in college, take more credits, graduate at higher rates when they are involved in internship programs inside the academy model. So, uh, most notably, one of the things I would like to just bring to your attention, we do have a series of, uh, partnership agreements that you hopefully will be approving tonight. Uh, but we did get a reauthorization of the Energy Academy through intergi, uh, and the partnership between our legislature, uh, and our governor. Uh, we are in a partnership with Claiborne County where we provide opportunities for students to be aware of STEM educated fields inside the energy pathway in order for them to be able to attain jobs. So that's all I got.
Wow.
I know, right?
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
You're, oh, no, you're not with the time. We're taxable bonds, I'm sorry.
Yes, that's me. How are you doing tonight?
Pretty good. Hello?
Um, Elizabeth.
Yeah, when you speak.
Elizabeth Clark with Butler Snow. Um, we've got Greg McMurray here. I know you probably know everybody, and Jamie Holloway, who is, works with me and Dee Thompson for Government Consultants. Um, what we have in front of you tonight is the opportunity to do a general obligation refunding bond. You'll remember back in 2018, we did a bond issue with a new markets transaction for the Vicksburg High School. Well, since that time, rates have dropped tremendously, and so there is an opportunity for the district to save, um, a bunch of money, and I'll let you talk about those potential savings. But the resolution tonight, um, what it does, per state law, you have to have at least 2% savings in order to refinance any debt in Mississippi. Um, this resolution approves the form of the documents that would be necessary to place this transaction with the prior lender. So they have come to us and said, we're willing to offer a lower interest rate, which we hope to have tomorrow. Um, we're, we want to offer this lower interest rate. We won't extend the terms, so the bonds won't go any longer than they already were, so no extension of terms. And then we will also keep the trustee or paying agent as Regions Bank, so to simplify the entire transaction. Uh, this resolution approves the refunding of certain maturities, assuming a certain interest rate is met, and he's gonna go through kind of preliminary, preliminarily where those are. Um, it would approve the signing of documents, assuming particular interest rates are met, and then it would hire the lender and the professionals. And I'm happy to answer any questions, but I know you want to talk about the savings, kind of give them an idea.
Sure. Thank y'all.
You go.
We appreciate it. Through this process, y'all passed an $83 million bond issue at 68.9% approval rate. And when we looked at this with, uh, government consultants and, and Butler Snow and Cruz and Associates, we structured this bond issue, which gave y'all flexibility. And now we're having the flexibility with rates easing down, where 2% is the state rate as far as where you can refund bonds. Well, at 2%, we could save the district $143,000. But what we're looking at is somewhere in a rate of $700,000 to $800,000.
Wow.
For the district. And then we're gonna come back after the first of the year and refund another $22 million and save another, hopefully unless rates don't go crazy, another $800,000. So it's.
Greg, is that roughly nine, about 9% savings?
It's over 9%. It's almost.
Two versus, nine versus two from a, from a standpoint.
1.8 million dollars sounds great.
Well, we'd, we're not saying 1.8 million. I'd say between 1 million and 1.8 million. But, you know, we never know what rates are gonna do, but we're just so happy to bring this to you, and it's, it was just a, a great effort from everybody to do the structuring on this particular bond issue. And of course, you know, y'all did all the work. So we hope that, uh, y'all accept these terms, and and we're excited about locking this rate in at the, by the end of the week and closing this out.
December 22nd.
So if we lock in this new rate, we're taking advantage of the interest rates going down. Let's say they just, in a year, they skyrocket. We're still locked in at this rate for the rest of it?
Forever.
Exactly.
Forever.
It's a fixed rate.
Okay. Do y'all have any questions?
Woo-hoo.
We appreciate the work y'all done.
Y'all are awesome.
Thank y'all.
Let me ask one question for a minute.
Sure.
Or make a statement, I shouldn't say a question.
Sure.
Um, on the 22nd, 3rd, I know we'll be out of school or something, but would, would one of you all be nice enough to text our superintendent to tell us how much money we did save, if that's possible?
We'll be happy to text. I'll be out.
And look, as soon as we lock in the rate.
Yes, ma'am.
We will know those exact savings.
Okay.
So we can email it, and you can announce it at the next board meeting, assuming it's locked in by that point, which it better be.
And also.
Elizabeth, we need to take action.
That's right.
Also, I want, I, I just want to say this, that Cassandra Lewis has been such a joy to work with, and absolutely return every call that we've ever had, and David, and Chad, and everybody else, you've just been great. Because this is a process, and we just appreciate y'all more than you know. Y'all are way ahead of the game.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do. We need to make a motion. I make a motion that we lock in the first motion. Okay, hold on just a second.
One, one second.
Bullard first. Okay, who's second?
I have a quick question. What, is this general fund money? Does it go back into the general fund?
It's secured by the full faith and credit, so, um, general obligation bond tax levy, yes.
There's GOs. Um, okay, there's a motion on the floor by Sally Bullard and second by Coach Alonzo Stevens.
Okay.
And what is the exact, exact, uh, motion? Is it to approve the resolution or?
Yeah, it would be to approve the resolution, authorizing the sale of the general, taxable general obligation refunding bonds.
There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Are you ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion is.
And I had my head down. Was that all five?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
They voted twice if they could have.
It's kind of hard not to vote for something like this.
So we, we would not have gotten a text if we would have voted no? Is that what I'm?
Yeah.
Wait for the text.
Thanks, Gary.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you. Bond project update, who do we have?
Jason.
Oh, we don't have nobody on TV.
Hey, Mr. Todd. Yes, Jason.
Jason's talking to us.
Oh, we got it? Okay, thank you. We have it.
I was glad I got to go after them because we can, we can use their money.
Yeah, I know, right? Don't tell Gary.
I am kidding. I am just kidding. Um, hey, good news, um, no action items tonight. You do have, um, the update in front of you, and I'll go over some, uh, some kind of notable things, um, if you will, on that. Um, the biggest one is at Warren Central. If you've not been by there, um, please do. We, um, have finally completed the site work related to all the issues we were having with the Agora. Um, it is up to grade, and we are ready to start the foundations. So that is a huge milestone and a, and a, and a big blessing, so we're glad to get that going. Um, the contractor's still submitted a letter, um, asking for some days and some times. I believe a lot of that is not valid, um, and Mark and Briggs and I are working on that, um, together, uh, in a response, um, for Warren Central. So also, Coach Stevens, I know you've asked, um, um, a lot, and we've got an update for you, uh, on Vicksburg Athletics on the football stadium. Um, we've got the press box additions where we were putting entrance and gates, um, for the band and the coaches across. That, uh, platform, um, is complete, so we've got a little bit of grading to do and, uh, finishing up some, uh, metal and aluminum work, but, uh, that little portion of work, um, is going well.
Thanks, Jason.
Yes, sir. Um, a little bit of, uh, other news, Coach Briggs is not with you tonight, um, but AOI, um, you know, we, we withheld funds because of flooring, um, and, and naturally, we have a large debate regarding liquidated damages, um, but working with Briggs, um, and the contractor, it looks like we're actually gonna use a mediator, um, in the coming, uh, weeks, maybe month or so, um, to see if we can hash out the details of that. Again, none of that, um, is final until it's presented and approved by you guys, but that is the direction, um, we're headed with the Academy of Innovation. So other than that, just a general punch list, trying to get things wrapped up on, uh, Beaumar and Beechwood and the junior highs. A lot of loose ends, been working a lot with Bill, making sure we've got warranty items addressed, but, um, Warren Central kind of, um, is the, is the, the big prize right now. Any questions for me?
Uh, real quick, yeah, on Warren Central, I mean, Vicksburg High, the potential subgrade water leak, fresh.
Yes, that is on the Athletics. Um, we are investigating that. Um, you remember, we had a lot of work done with the city. Um, uh, we've got the ramp retaining wall, and some water was coming out, and it was tested, um, and, um, as potable water. Um, so we are, um, exploring those avenues again, one to see if it's a contractor-related issue. Um, we don't believe we have any lives close to that, so we're trying to figure out what is going on there.
Okay.
Was that the auditorium you spoke of?
No, this is on the, this is at the, at the football field, right?
Okay, okay.
Yes, sir. Vicksburg, uh, the new concession entry restroom area.
No, no, there's a leak in the auditorium. Excuse, excuse me, Brian, but may I please just piggyback on this while it's on my brain? Uh, there's a leak in the auditorium at Vicksburg High. Have you sent someone over to attend to that?
Yes, they were actually over there this morning, um, trying to investigate and be on top of it during the rain. Um, but yes, that's under Thrash and, and their purview without warranty. Warranty works, so.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Pratt.
No, all good.
Make sure, Mr., are you?
Yeah, I'm good. Okay.
Jason.
Yes, sir.
Coach Stevens, I got, I got a couple questions for you. Uh, one, uh, on the, on the gym at Vicksburg High, uh, where we could not, uh, for the, for the structural reason, have enough room to put those bleachers behind the, behind the goals?
Yes, sir.
Now, what I'm, what I'm, uh, at the time, Gary told us that we would get a, from, from the, from the work was already in, we could use that money somewhere else in the gym. You remember that conversation?
Yeah, we used it on the floor.
Yes, sir.
We used it on the floor.
Yeah, we spent a, uh, large portion of that redoing the, uh, gym floor.
Okay. Second, on the, on the gym down at the armory, we had approved amount of money to do a new floor in there, and what was happening was that we had a leak that was supposed to be taken care of before the floor.
I don't remember that. I don't remember.
I don't, I don't think we, all right, so I do know there was a roof issue, um, that was not in the original bond issue. We received a proposal from Thrash, and, uh, Chad, you may remember the date, I do not, but it, it may have been well over a year ago that we, uh, that you guys voted that we tabled that until we get closer to the end of the construction to see if bond issue funds would allow the work on the roof in that building. Does that ring a bell, Chad?
That sounds right.
And, and my last one, the auditorium, uh, is beautiful with the seating in there, but what I'm looking at, is there anything, Jason, that we can do with the floor that's, uh, coming down in there with the chairs on it? It, 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 it looks, it looks bad.[1744.83] And I don't know, you know, is, is, I don't know, can we smooth it out? I don't know.
Are we talking about the, the concrete or the vinyl tile?
The, the concrete, the concrete on, 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 on the floor going into the auditorium.
Yes, sir. You're talking about where the chairs are? The concrete where the chairs are, correct?
Yes, sir.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm sure there's some things we can look at. I'll be happy to, next week, Thanksgiving, I can get Bill to let me in or what have you, we can take a look at that and I'll email you guys just some potential options on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Coach.
Do we have anything else for Jason? And let's get off the phone quick so we won't have another change order.
That's right.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Mr. President, while, while we're on this subject, I know y'all have received texts from me on, about this matter, but I'm very, very concerned and I haven't even been over to Warren Central to see what's going on over there. So we got this very, very expensive track going around our football field. We have to put down a mat for us to walk, for y'all to walk to your hospitality tent across that so your shoes don't mess up the, the track.
Yes, sir.
All right, so on every football game I've been to this year, which has been most of them, I've seen stuff left on the track, I've seen chairs on the track, I've seen equipment on the track, all these different things, PT's table sitting up there on the track with nothing under it. Now, Preston did put pads under all that after I asked him to. Then this past Friday night, I see a ATV running around the track delivering water jugs to both football teams with hunting tires, knobby tires on this, on this ATV, taking short turns, which means you're doing this with the thing and it's digging into our brand-new track. So, if we're going to do that, let's get them a golf cart or something that has smooth wheels, first of all, but secondly, they should not be on that track any more than a, any other vehicle.
Because we talked about the whole thing of an ambulance having to get out there and that was an extreme-
It was an extreme big deal and these three-
But they should not be-
-kids are running a, a, a John Deere Gator around with, with knobby tires on it on our brand-new track.
No.
And I mean-
Or should the bands be pushing hard tires across the track, like with a scaffolding or anything like that? They all need to be soft tires and they need to-
I don't know how they, how that's supposed to work. I know that it's a, you know, we were very protective of that, of the money we're spending, of this, of the public money and public funds and, you know, all it's going to take is one bobo like that and we're going to end up spending $20,000 to fix a hole in a brand-new track.
All of us, it would bode the principle.
I would appreciate it. But everything else out there looks amazing. The sound system was much better, so, I mean, over the last, after the first game, it got a lot better, so, and plus, we're kicking everybody's butts.
That's kind of nice winning, isn't it?
It's even better in here and we appreciate everybody that, that was able to throw a hand. Okay. At this time, Ms. Lewis, we're, you know, your financial report. Ms. Lewis?
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Lewis.
Hi. And I agree with Greg, I think you're wonderful too.
Thank you. All right, for the financial report, the statement of cash flow, as of October, the estimated fund balance is 15.6 million. We will again see this number increase in January and February as the year goes past. For our avalorum, our October avalorum task collections, collections total 308,661.87. This is a little lower than what we've seen in the past at this time, but again, we do intention or intend for this to increase as we go along. Our MAEP collections, we received that, preparations for October of the 2,388,573. This is the trend for fiscal '22. Again, we don't include the teacher pay because I want you guys to see it separate from what we actually collect for our MAEP. Our casino revenue, we received that on time and for September, we can say that our revenue is 58,084.59. So this concludes my financial report. I do have another action item.
Yes, ma'am.
How much motion, we accept the financial report?
Second.
Remoted and property second. One question, did we receive our money from the casinos on time?
Well, we're early this month because of, you know, the early board meeting, it has not, we have not received it.
But last month, we did receive it on that.
Yes, we did. This is the 58,000 that I'm reporting.
Yes, ma'am. It's removed and property second. Are you ready to vote? All in favor, say aye. Pose like sign. It is approved. Yes, ma'am.
For the action item, as you know, we've had an emergency at Warren Central High School in terms of electricity. The OSA purchasing law tells us that we must report that with all supporting documentation, those purchases that we incurred for that. So I do have that, I have the purchase order. We have to get a generator that was shipped in from Baton Rouge, but we had to get the truck from Texas. So that, I can give you those numbers.
Would you please?
Okay, for the generator, it was 23,700.
Okay.
How big was your room? It's a decent truck. I'm in a trailer bed.
It's a portable generator.
Yeah. They pull it up there with the 18-wheeler and hook it up.
Yes.
It's stock, a stock gal.
Asking for numbers, telling me, giving me numbers.
You're asking for KW.
Y'all draw me a picture. Yeah, yeah, I don't mind. That's what I wanted, thank you.
It's got to be over 50 KW.
It's 800.
It's 800.
1,500?
800.
800.
Is there an echo in here?
We're, we're pulling, we're pulling at least 80 KW for the network equipment alone.
And, and that was to get the kids back in school? They, they had a couple of days off.
That's right.
Do we take that off at Thanksgiving? No, I'm just kidding. I saw too many faces around here. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
For the gas, we did issue a purchase order for 50,000. We won't need that. We're way under what we needed, but we do have that as a reserve just in case, but we won't need it. We have determined that. And for the install, it is 75,000. My understanding, they're going to start on it Monday when everybody's out. That could change that amount. We do anticipate it maybe going up a little bit, but we're going to do a change order if that is the case. And I will say that we will be reimbursed for all of these expenses that we incur.
The vendor will be reimbursed.
Yes.
So there's a, is there a motion to approve the purchases that was encountered with the power outage at Warren Central?
I could make a motion that we accept Ms. Lewis' change order for the, for the work being done at Warren Central.
Second.
It's removed and property second. Are there any other questions? Are you ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion is approved.
Mr. Stevens, one question, not related to the motion, but are we going to recover any cost related to the time and effort expended by our team to manage this situation? So in other words, Bill's-
You could look at that.
Part administrative-
Yes.
I mean, we, we've, we've had some other costs other than just fixing it-
Sure.
-that we ought to try to be able to recoup as well.
Sure. We'll look at that.
Anything else, ma'am?
That's it, that's all I have?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're down to the proposed consent agenda and that includes I, I think, well, J and K, one of them, we, we, I think we've done one, which was the, oh, that was, oh, okay. I, J, and K. Do we have any items that needs to be pulled?
I'd like, well, not really pulled, but I have to excuse on K1.
You want K1?
Yeah.
K, K, K1.
So y'all can vote on those separately. If you have a motion for consent, I and J, he could vote and then y'all could do K1 separately and then he could recuse himself.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, that's, you're exactly right. Okay, I got you. Okay, so, only item I'd like to pull is going to be two and, mm, mm, duh, 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 two, nine, and I promise they'll be really quick, I promise. Two, nine, and 15.
On I?
Uh, yes, yes, sir. Two, nine, and 15.
I'll make a motion that we accept the proposed consent agenda with the exception of I2, I9, and I15? Is that what I heard?
And K1, right.
And K1.
There's, there's second.
Second, sir.
It's removed and property second. Are you ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion is approved. And Mr. Stevens knows we have to ask this question so we can be legal. The only reason why I pull the accounts payable document.
This man has a mind like a steel trap. I just want to tell you, this is out of a comment that was made in a training almost three years ago, but I'm so proud of it. He always does it.
Thank you. And, and let me say that Ms. Lewis and her team, Ms. McInnes, they do a wonderful job of, of answering the questions and I appreciate them very, very much. Thank you so much. My only question I'll have is, are, are we still, I see where we're still cutting grass? Are we, is it still grass season? I'm just-
Yeah. Our grass is still growing.
I hadn't cut mine, I'm just asking.
I sure wish it wasn't.
Okay. Okay, so is it just one person that's cutting grass? I guess we'll be, I'll make it that way.
I don't know.
I'm just looking at the, the-
Bills on line.
Accounts payable document.
Well, I mean, some of them, you're talking about the vendors' gym or you're talking about-
No, no, I'm, here it is, right here. It's on page, actually on page one. It's going to be-
If all vendors paid out of that same account, I would assume that answers, yes, but I'm asking for the same.
Okay, but I only see, I only see one person that's cutting grass, so I'm going to do what I shouldn't do.
I know we had multiple vendors that are doing that.
Okay, but I just, I guess the reason why I asked if we're still cutting grass, this only, this is the only vendor.
Only person cutting.
Uh-huh. And I just want, maybe it's their school.
I'm checking too.
Okay, yeah, Ms. McInnes will take care of that for me. Okay, that's all I-
I'm looking for somebody that would edit this, right? Yeah.
Okay.
Make a motion, we, we approve I2.
There's second?
Second.
It's removed and property second. Are you ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion is approved. Dr. McGee, my only question is, why in the middle of the school year?
Well, we got to make sure whatever handbook is aligned with the drop, I'm sorry, with the drop-off handbook picked up time at the high school.
So they were doing it differently than the handbook or we need to adjust what they're doing?
No, we need to adjust the handbook to match the school.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Are there, is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion, we approve I9.
Second.
It's removed and property second. You ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion is approved. And on just 15, I'm just curious about why the additional time, the additional 10 days, it appears that we were, we were rolling pretty good with them and now they're asking for additional 10 days.
Mickey, are you online?
Yes, sir, I'm online.
Okay.
We requested the additional time just because we felt like the teachers still needed that additional support. They have made a lot of progress with Kids First and really dug down into some, some data very deeply and, you know, just, it takes time to do that, especially when, you know, they're in during the day and there's kids in there. They have short periods of time if they can meet with the, with the consultants and, you know, the consultants are in the classrooms observing and, you know, it's just a, it's just a time crunch, but we've gotten very positive feedback from the teachers and just feel like we need some additional time with them.
So, in, in your opinion, it is working?
Yes, sir, absolutely, and I'll have some hard data here in another couple of weeks.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion, we approve I15.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
It's removed and property second. Are you ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion is approved. I should have gone to 21 with the letter of support, but I'm going to let it go because I didn't pull it. If they don't win Saturday, then our letter of support will be retracted. Okay, we're down to K1, all right, right, am I correct? K1?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve K1?
I make a motion, we approve K1.
I second the motion.
It's removed and property second. And note that Coach Stevens was not in, in the room for the vote, please, if you don't mind me adding it to your motion, sir. It's removed and property second with the addition. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion is approved. We're down to M. District policy review.
Somebody want to grab Coach? Well, not grabbing. I know, right?
He's getting cookies. He got a cookie before us.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. District policy, district policy review. Just remember, each month, we'll bring a, a portion of the board policies for you to review. And so by the end of 12 months, we've reviewed all the policies that we have on the books. So do we need to, this for information only?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay, information only. Okay, thank you.
Sixteenth section.
Yeah. Who's, Ms. Lewis? Who's going to do the sixteenth section?
Ms. Winesley.
I know you're, uh-
Sitting in the corner.
I know, right? It's quiet.
On here, I have six items. We'll start with the late and upcoming payments. Mr. Cook did make his payment today. And Roy Simmons, he's going to be in the December, his, I'm sorry, his lease, the bid will be in, will have it in the November board meeting. And then December, they will start making their payment. I think that's correct. No, January, they'll start making their payment.
So on the, the easement, that has been reassessed?
The temporary easement is for Barry and Carolyn Cole.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The 25-year lease on, on the, the $48,000, is that, has that been reassessed? Or is this, this, is this just the, well, he, he or she's been paying?
Mm-hmm, that's what they've been paying. They will be reassessed on, on, um-
It has been. It has been?
They're upcoming to be reassessed.
Okay.
Because right now, he's not, he's just making a regular payment.
He's not up for...
For renewal.
For us to vote on it?
Correct, correct.
Okay, okay.
He's just making a regular payment.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, okay, thank you. I read that wrong.
And does anybody have any questions regarding the upcoming payments? The only two I thought I should speak on was Cook and Simmons because he's gonna have a bid coming up. And he did call today wanting to be advised on what he should do, so he does want that particular parcel still. And everybody else is just regular payments. The rest are action items. Number two, temporary easement to survey the land, and that's, again, Barry and Carolyn Cole. They're looking for permission to have access to the temporary easement. The street near the location is Drummond and Pope Street near Vicksburg High School. They assess, this access is necessary for them for improvements, repairs, and landscaping for possibility of putting a trailer or a house on the land, which may require heavy equipment.
Are they, did they say how long they, that the temporary would be?
Six months. It says six months on here.
Six months? Okay, and I know in the city, you can't have a mobile home, so when they say trailer, they're not speaking of a mobile home, correct?
And I would have to ask that question to them, they are here. I don't know if you will...
But that's not our, I mean, that's not our problem either.
That doesn't matter to us. We just need to get them access to the property.
We just say whether or not we let them have access to the property.
It looks like that's going across that, what, used to be that little park that's right above that entrance to the football field?
Uh-huh.
That little cleared area, right by Charles Tony's swimming pool?
Yeah, 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 okay.
You remember that little park, used to be there?
Yeah, right behind his pool. I was wondering, I was gonna ask you that question.
I love y'all's historic connection to the town.
Yeah, okay, 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 I...
Forget what I do for a living.
I know, right?
We appreciate it. Do we have any other questions?
We need to take these action items one at a time, is what we wanna do there?
Temporary easement, for six months, right?
Mm-hmm.
Temporary for six months? Okay.
Yes.
My only suggestion with that is that the stipulation is put in the easement that is returned back to its current condition out of use.
Or better.
Or better.
I make a motion to accept temporary easement.
Second.
Removed and property second. Are there any other questions? Ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Motion is approved. Do you have anything else, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I have several items, I'm sorry. The next item, number three, is an action item as well. It's the timber sale with Good Hope. The forestry commissioner submitted papers to me and we are needing to return the performance bond to Good Hope in the amount of $5,000.
That's item two, right?
Mm-hmm. Item three.
Item four.
So they satisfied to leave what they were supposed to, so we're good?
Item two is final inspection of the timber sale. Item three is request for approval authorization of service forms.
Yeah, item two is actually the timber sale.
Yes.
The final inspection. I'll make a motion, we approve item two.
Item two, did you say two or three?
Two.
Two, final inspection of the timber sale. I guess not a bond.
Thank you. All in favor, aye. Oppose, motion is approved. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, number four.
We got number three.
It's three for us. We must be out of...
Request for authorization of service form.
Yeah, request for approval of authorization of service forms. The Mississippi Forestry Commission authorization for service form for FY '22 for parcel S16, T16 North, R5 East is presented for approval. That's what I3 says.
What is that?
Section, section 16, township 16 North, range 5 East.
Yes.
What is the pledge?
Make a motion that we approve the request for authorization of services.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Motion is approved.
Item number four is lease renewal, open door Bible church. Open door Bible church likely to renew their lease for five more years for church purposes only at a yearly rate of $525.
In the last board meeting, it was approved. I had a problem with the numbers and how they were, how it was being calculated, and I used what was used in the past. So I called over to the Secretary of State's office, spoke with Jim Loon, and the only number that we're supposed to be multiplying by is 5 percent, no less than. So his percentage is 7 percent, because for the past two terms, he's been paying the same amount. And to increase what we're getting, that amount had to be increased, so I went over with Jim Loon and he thought that that was okay to do without us having, you know, any problems behind it.
So we're changing, the 525 went up for Good Hope Church?
Because the first calculation, based on what I had, was 56250, and all of that math is correct, but that's not how you do it.
Okay, so it actually went down.
Right.
Yes, down by a little bit, it's 7,500 times 7 percent.
I gotcha.
So I make a motion that we approve the lease renewal for the open door Bible church for $525 annually.
I second the motion.
Removed and property second, but we have to rescind, since we've already approved the 562, I don't know who the original person was.
So do we make it to be a correction?
Same church.
Yeah.
No, 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 not church.
Who made the motion?
We approved 562 last month. Whoever made the motion has to rescind that motion, and then a new motion will come up, which is the 525. I don't know who actually made the motion last month.
We don't, we just...
To approve, to approve open door Bible church.
I think we just have to, someone has to request a new amount.
I make...
Correction. I just think we make a motion to correct the amount.
You have to rescind that motion, because that motion is already there.
But we, okay, the only reason I don't say that is, we make determinations every time we vote on something, and we don't rescind the last time we voted on it.
Yeah, you rescind a motion that has been on the floor that hasn't been passed.
I, Blake, this is usually when Briggs says something.
I mean, we're just correcting.
So I think Mr. Sturgis' point is, last month, which I wouldn't hear, I apologize, but there was an approval of 562, and he's simply saying, rescind that as you approve the reduction back to 525, although...
Your action of actually approving the 525 overran.
Yeah, but I just will point this out, the 525, I understand you're saying that's 5 percent increase, is that right?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's a 5 percent increase?
Seven.
Seven percent, okay. And you're just, your point just is, you think that's too much?
No, we calculated wrong.
We calculated.
We did the 562. It was calculated wrong.
I make a motion that we rescind the previous award for the church at the 500...
525.
No, the original amount. And then we approve the 525.
I second the motion.
Okay. With that, I'd like to make an addition here, is whoever made the motion on this board, if it wasn't Mr. Pratt, do you agree to rescind the motion? Because at this time, we don't know who did it.
No, we don't agree.
And so with that, we can rescind the motion if it wasn't you, Mr. Pratt.
Right.
And then we can go on with the new vote. So if we're all in agreeance with that, we're good with the rescension of the last month's vote, and we can, now Mr. Pratt is asking to go on and approve the 525. There's a motion and a second. Are you ready to vote for the $525? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Motion is approved. Number five, sir.
All right. On our list is...
Permission to advertise the agricultural lease. Again, this one was approved. Attorney Hobson wanted to have it done close to December. He wanted to change it. So now we can approve it and go forward with it.
I make a motion that we approve the request for permission to advertise the agricultural lease for section 16, township 18 North, range 2 East, with a minimum bid of $46,000.
Removed and property second. Any other questions? Are you ready to vote? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, like sign. Motion is approved. Do you have anything else, ma'am?
Nope, that's it.
We thank you.
Briggs is gonna be so jealous, he just loves to talk during 16th sections. He does.
I make a motion that we go into closed session.
Can I make, wait, wait, please, Mr. President, if you may, I meant to ask this at the beginning of the meeting, but we lost a dear member of the Vicksburg Warren School District that served over 37 years as a science teacher, Ms. Patsy Hodges, who was my seventh grade science teacher at Warren Junior. And just so you know, I won the state science fair that year because of her efforts. Would never have entered it if it hadn't been for her. So if anyone wants to see a solar hot water collector the size of a small Volkswagen, I'll be glad to show it to you.
And that's Ms. Hodges?
Ms. Hodges, Ms. Patsy Hodges. I ask for a moment of silence, and I would also ask that if it is appropriate and minimal that the district issue a letter of sympathy to the family and appreciation of her over 37 years of service to our children in the district.
We always do that from the district side, is there an additional, sometimes we do...
Just as long as you recognize that the board appreciates and wants to offer our sympathy and appreciation for her service to the district.
May we have a moment of silence for Ms. Hodges, please? Amen.
Thank you. I make a motion to go into closed session, set the agenda for a second session.
Removed and property second. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, like sign. Motion is approved.